In the absence of Chair Gilbert, I will serve as Chair of the meeting today. I will call the meeting to order and ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Abizana Connolly, President.
President.
In the absence of Chair Gilbert, I will serve as Chair of the meeting.
President.
Simmons.
President.
Williams.
President.
Pursuant to the Board's bylaws, Trustee Saager notified the Board Secretary that she is unable to attend the meeting in person due to health reasons. She is permitted to participate by video or audio conference if the meeting members physically present to allow Trustee Saager to join.
Still moved.
Target.
Please call the roll.
Abizana Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Hightower.
Yes.
Saager.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
The motion passes. Public questions and comments. There will be a public questions and comments portion available at today's meeting to last up to 15 minutes, total three minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone?
No speakers today.
Okay, no speakers, okay. Moving on. We now have a presentation by SIU Carbondale Nursing Students. Provost Tucker, would you please introduce our speakers?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and we're really excited to have students from our nursing program today. We have Aiden Radenmaker, Gillian Young, Logan Kirkpatrick, and Megan Meadows, and they can introduce themselves as they go through their presentation. We're going to start though with Dr. Kelly Whittington, who is the founding Program Director for the nursing program. And her clinical and academic experience, I think you're going to see that, is the experiential part of the nursing program is fairly unique. And they're going to talk about the ripple effect with our BSN students providing healthcare. And then Dean Morgan at the end, who's behind us here, is just going to give us a quick update about the partnership of bringing nursing to the Springfield area. Dr. Whittington?
Hello, thank you for having us today. We appreciate being here and the opportunity. Provost Tucker mentioned the ripple effect, and I like to think about this ripple effect when I talk to my students about the impact that they're going to have. What they learned at SIUC and in their nursing program serves as a foundation in their nursing practice, and through the years it's going to have a far-reaching effect on the patients that they care for. And hopefully for the ones that are going to stay close to home, it'll have an effect in our region or an impact in our region. So think about that as we go through our presentation. This is the mission of our BSN program on the Carbondale campus. I'd like to point out a few words here, that the BSN, the SIUC BSN faculty are charged with ensuring that our students graduate with the skills that they need to competently deliver care. This care is never static. Their ability to think critically and apply clinical judgment is crucial to being an active caregiver in an ever-dynamic and ever-changing healthcare landscape. We talked quite a bit about that on the way up here, about how it's not just learning a task, how it's learning that skill that's needed to do the task and being able to apply it in a couple of different settings, with different family members, with different patients, et cetera. One of the things I'm extremely proud about is that we utilize a couple of different things with our clinical approach. A standard clinical typically in Southern Illinois prior to our program looked at a one clinical instructor to 10 students in the clinical setting, and the students wouldn't be able to do anything skill-wise unless that instructor was standing right there over their shoulder. Well, two things that we do a little bit different in our approach to clinicals is we still have that clinical instructor, but we tie our students to preceptors who are registered nurses that are trained to be preceptors in the clinical setting that allows them to do more of that, not only the hands-on skills, but the critical thinking that goes behind, how do I apply these skills to those patients? Another thing we do in the senior year, which these guys are my seniors, so they're getting ready to do some of these things, is we do a lot of experiential learning opportunities in the community. So some of those examples that we have here is we provide education, which is a distinct registered nurse opportunity, not LPN or CNA, it's a distinct registered nurse opportunity. We do that with our children and families in coordination with our dental hygiene students on Smile Day. Our seniors will teach on August the 19th. We teach first-year medical students how to do injections and IVs. It's the funnest day ever. These guys will be able to do that on the second day of school, interacting with the school medicine students. And then we like to provide first aid at some local sporting events, that's one of my first pictures there. Some exciting things that we do. Additionally, not just in the clinical setting, not just in the acute care or hospital setting, think about some other areas we provide clinical services. So the first thing up here on the left-hand corner is my students doing a nursing career camp. So that nursing career camp is not only exciting young students, usually high-school-age students about nursing, but hopefully it's a pipeline to admissions to our program. So we're trying to build that pipeline, not only to our program, but to the profession of nursing as well. So that's one thing we do here. We provide health assessments for Special Olympics. We provide healthy prostate teaching at health fairs, and these are just a few of our examples of our students actually serving in our community and in our region. We actively work within our College of Health and Human Sciences with students in occupational therapy, physical therapy assistance, speech therapy, social work programs to strengthen interprofessional collaboration. This effort's not just about building connections within that academic setting, it's about modeling the kind of teamwork that ultimately will enhance patient care. By fostering these interdisciplinary partnerships now, we hope that these, we are planting those seeds for stronger, more cohesive collaboration in the healthcare field where that ripple effect will benefit not only our patients, but the providers that we're caring for as well. In today's demanding healthcare environment, think about 2020, think about COVID, so we're still reaping that. So in today's demanding healthcare environment, it's essential that we not only develop my clinically competent nurses, but also emotionally resilient ones. That's why we're investing in experiential learning opportunities such as the Sky Happiness Retreat and Cope to Thrive programs. These initiatives help equip our students to practice coping on long-term skills that will strengthen their mental well-being, they'll help to reduce their stress, they'll build long-term resilience. By integrating these experiences into their education, we're hoping that that will help prepare my future nurses to thrive personally and professionally in the most challenging of settings. Also, we're hoping that that decreases burnout and leaving the profession of nursing. So we want to keep these guys in that profession throughout their careers. I have charged these guys with two questions, so I'm going to have each of them answer two questions. You can see where they're located by the star, so we're all right here in Southern Illinois. My first question that these two are going to answer for me are, you're located in Southern Illinois, you grew up in Southern Illinois. We have a lot of community colleges within our region that have very good nursing programs. Why did you choose SIU to become, to be your education leader of choice and to get that BSN? So I'm going to start with Logan here, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Logan Kirkpatrick. I'm from Christopher, Illinois, town, just a farm town, about 2,000 people. Coming out of high school, I really wanted to go into nursing. I didn't know where I was going to go, you know, Ren Lake's right there, you know, you got little community colleges, which they have good programs, but I wanted that university experience and SIU something. Like, SIU has a good foothold on that in Southern Illinois because there's no other universities around there, especially for nursing. So I'd done that. I picked SIU for that reason as well. They offer the Healthcare Management minor throughout the course, and I feel like that's something that could be beneficial down the line if I was, you know, wanting to transition from the bedside and to more of a management role. And like Dr. Whittington said, it's a four-year program, it's such a, it's more comprehensive, it's not just surface level, it's not just the what, but the why. Why are we doing this? You know, really taking the time to critically think about what we do with those. And also, SIUC has, you know, ties to Memorial and also to the St. Louis region hospitals, you know. We have opportunities, we've had students go there for the Hulbee and Pediatric Clinicals and St. Louis, which is far more expansive than what Carbondale has to offer. So I think that's a good thing as well.
Thank you, Logan. Go ahead and introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and then answer that.
My name's Megan Meadows. I'm from Heron, Illinois, and so right down the road from me is Johnny Logan College. They have a great nursing program, but I chose the SIU program as well because I wanted that university experience. The Healthcare Management minor, like Logan was trying to explain, that is a great thing for not only having clinical experience, but also learning that business and leadership opportunity, learning the policymaking behind your day-to-day nursing experience at the bedside. It's very important to truly understand both sides of it. It helps you kind of lead into a different perspective and another great thing to do with this BSN program is...
We talked on the way up, you mentioned that if you have your Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, you're able to pivot to different jobs or different areas in a hospital as you grow and you mature in your nursing practice.
Right, so that leadership role that we were talking about on the way up, we talked about how we can move into healthcare management later on in graduate school, we can learn administration, and a big one is nurse leadership. So that would be more of teaching. So the BSN program kind of leads you more into that and expanding onto your bedside career.
Thank you. Then I have another question here. What impact has the nursing program made on you that plays a role in how you approach patient care? So I'm going to ask Gillian, introduce yourself and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Gillian. I'm from Ava, Illinois.
Which is how big?
It's very small, it's probably the smallest out of all of them. So I feel like SIU has gave me the opportunity as a PCT and...
Which is what?
Like, it's gave me a big opportunity.
What's a PCT?
A Patient Care Tech. Sorry. So I'm a Patient Care Tech at St. Joe's at SIH. I've done clinicals, and I've noticed a lot of like the other community colleges and other, I'm not like picking on them anyway, but I've noticed that they are not as hands-on as SIU. I am a very hands-on learner. I, when I'm doing something, I can't really read, I'm like, I can read, but I can't read and comprehend as good as other people, but hands-on is like honestly what, like my learning style of, like, let's see, what else? From clinicals and labs, and I feel like they very much like prepared me and mentally, she mentioned mentally, doing programs like focusing on our mental health to learn, like, not only like the nursing aspect, but like taking care of yourself. I feel like that's one of the ways that SIU like is a good program, and it's prepared me.
Thank you.
That the BSN, the SIUC BSN faculty are charged with ensuring that our students graduate with the skills that they need to competently deliver care. This care is never static. Their ability to think critically and apply clinical judgment is crucial to being an active caregiver in an ever dynamic and ever changing healthcare landscape. We talked quite a bit about that on the way up here about how it's not just learning a task, how it's learning that skill that's needed to do the task and being able to apply it in a couple of different settings with different family members, with different patients, et cetera. One of the things I'm extremely proud about is that we utilize a couple of different things with our clinical approach. A standard clinical typically in Southern Illinois prior to our program looked at a one clinical instructor to 10 students in the clinical setting. And the students wouldn't be able to do anything skill wise unless that instructor was standing right there over their shoulder. Well, two things that we do a little bit different in our approach to clinicals is we still have that clinical instructor, but we tie our students to preceptors who are registered nurses that are trained to be preceptors in the clinical setting that allows them to do more of that, not only the hands-on skills, but the critical thinking that goes behind, how do I apply these skills to those patients? Another thing we do in the senior year, which these guys are my seniors, so they're getting ready to do some of these things, is we do a lot of experiential learning opportunities in the community. So some of those examples that we have here is we provide education, which is a distinct registered nurse opportunity, not LPN or CNA, it's a distinct registered nurse opportunity. We do that with our children and families in coordination with our dental hygiene students on Smile Day. Our seniors will teach on August the 19th. We teach first year medical students how to do injections and IVs. It's the funnest day ever. These guys will be able to do that on the second day of school, interacting with those school medicine students. And then we like to provide first aid at some local sporting events. That's one of my first pictures there. Some exciting things that we do. Additionally, not just in the clinical setting, not just in the acute care or hospital setting, think about some other areas we provide clinical services. So the first thing up here on the left-hand corner is my students doing a nursing career camp. So that nursing career camp is not only exciting young students, usually high school age students about nursing, but hopefully it's a pipeline to admissions to our program. So we're trying to build that pipeline, not only to our program, but to the profession of nursing as well. So that's one thing we do here. We provide health assessments for Special Olympics. We provide healthy prostate teaching at health fairs. And these are just a few of our examples of our students actually serving in our community and in our region. We actively work within our College of Health and Human Sciences with students in occupational therapy, physical therapy assistance, speech therapy, social work programs to strengthen interprofessional collaboration. This effort's not just about building connections within that academic setting, it's about modeling the kind of teamwork that ultimately will enhance patient care. By fostering these interdisciplinary partnerships now, we hope that these, we are planting those seeds for stronger, more cohesive collaboration in the healthcare field where that ripple effect will benefit not only our patients, but the providers that we're caring for as well. In today's demanding healthcare environment, think about 2020, think about COVID, so we're still on the, we're still reaping that. So in today's demanding healthcare environment, it's essential that we not only develop my clinically competent nurses, but also emotionally resilient ones. That's why we're investing in experiential learning opportunities such as the Sky Happiness Retreat and Cope to Thrive programs. These initiatives help equip our students to practice coping on long-term skills that will strengthen their mental wellbeing, they'll help to reduce their stress, they'll build long-term resilience. By integrating these experiences into their education, we're hoping that that will help prepare my future nurses to thrive personally and professionally in the most challenging of settings. Also, we're hoping that that decreases burnout and leaving the profession of nursing. So we want to keep these guys in that profession throughout their careers. I have charged these guys with two questions, so I'm going to have each of them answer two questions. You can see where they're located by the star, so we're all right here in Southern Illinois. My first question that these two are going to answer for me are, you're located in Southern Illinois, you grew up in Southern Illinois. We have a lot of community colleges within our region that have very good nursing programs. Why did you choose SIU to become, to be your education leader of choice and to get that BSN? So I'm going to start with Logan here, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Logan Kirkpatrick. I'm from Christopher, Illinois, town, just a farm town, about 2,000 people. Coming out of high school, I really wanted to go into nursing. I didn't know where I was going to go, you know, Ren Lake's right there, you know, you got little community colleges, which they have good programs, but I wanted that university experience and SIU something, like SIU has a good foothold on that in Southern Illinois because there's no other universities around there, especially for nursing. So I'd done that. I picked SIU for that reason as well. They offer the healthcare management minor throughout the course, and I feel like that's something that could be beneficial down the line if I was, you know, wanting to transition from the bedside and to more of a management role. And like Dr. Whittington said, it's a four-year program, it's such a, it's more comprehensive, it's not just surface level, it's not just the what, but the why. Why are we doing this? You know, really taking the time to critically think about what we do with those. And also, SIUC has, you know, ties to Memorial and also to the St. Louis region hospitals, you know, we have opportunities, we've had students go there for the Hulbee and Pediatric Clinicals in St. Louis, which is far more expansive than what Carbondale has to offer. So I think that's a good thing as well.
Thank you, Logan. Go ahead and introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and then answer that.
My name's Megan Meadows. I'm from Heron, Illinois. And so, right down the road from me is Johnny Logan College. They have a great nursing program, but I chose the SIU program as well because I wanted that university experience. The healthcare management minor, like Logan was trying to explain, that is a great thing for not only having clinical experience, but also learning that business and leadership opportunity, learning the policymaking behind your day-to-day nursing experience at the bedside. It's very important to truly understand both sides of it. It helps you kind of lead into a different perspective. And another great thing to do with this BSN program is...
We talked on the way up, you mentioned if you have your Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, you're able to pivot to different jobs or different areas in a hospital as you, as you grow and you mature in your nursing practice.
Right, so that leadership role that we were talking about on the way up, we talked about how we can move into healthcare management later on in graduate school. We can learn administration, and a big one is nurse leadership. So that would be more of teaching. So the BSN program kind of leads you more into that and expanding onto your bedside career.
Thank you. Then I have another question here. What impact has the nursing program made on you that plays a role in how you approach patient care? So I'm going to ask Gillian, introduce yourself and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Gillian. I'm from Ava, Illinois.
Which is how big?
It's very small, it's probably the smallest out of all of them. So I feel like SIU has gave me the opportunity, I was a PCT and...
Which is what?
Like, it's gave me a big opportunity.
What's a PCT?
A patient care tech. Sorry. So I'm a patient care tech at St. Joe's at SIH. I've done clinicals, and I've noticed a lot of like the other community colleges and other, I'm not like picking on them anyway, but I've noticed that they are not as hands-on as SIU. I am a very hands-on learner. I, when I'm doing something, I can't really read, I'm like, I can read, but I can't read and comprehend as good as other people, but hands-on is like honestly, that what, like my, my learning style of, like, let's see what else. From clinicals and labs, and I feel like they very much like prepared me and mentally, she mentioned mentally, doing programs like focusing on our mental health to learn, like, not only like the nursing aspect, but like taking care of yourself. I feel like that's one of the ways that SIU like is a good program, and it's prepared me.
Thank you. Please tell us where you're from, how large that town is.
All right. My name is Ada Radamaker. I'm from Viana, Illinois, a population of 1,200. We are the capital though, so I get the brag about it. Of Big Johnson County over there. I come from a family of healthcare workers. Both of my parents are nurses. They went to the Shawnee Community College program. My sister just started her first semester there. So actually, I talk a lot with them about the differences in our programs. And like Dr. Whittington mentioned earlier, the standard there is a 10 to 1, 10 students to one clinical instructor. It's a fine system, certainly better than nothing. But I talk with my parents and the amount of skills practice and just mental practice I get to have with a one-on-one preceptor experience has made my education at SIU more holistic, I would say. There's one thing I learned from Dr. Mahoney's intercollegiate athletic class. The stick of coaches education are highly beneficial. And I'd add another thing that I learned from that class, it's that Ivy League rowing teams have no right being as interesting as they really are. But yeah, I would just say that the preceptor model of clinical that we have at SIU Carbondale is holistic and innovative for the nursing field. Thank you, guys.
Our last one here. I like to do a little bit of numbers on this one. So we produced 152 graduates with 27 that are poised to graduate in August. We have an accelerated program, they're in a live review right now, they'll graduate the, at the beginning of August. Forty-nine is group, this group will graduate in May. They're providing care all across a variety of venues, from acute care, med search, OR, ER, ICU, CAT labs, endoscopy, school nursing, correctional facilities, mental health facilities, caring for patients anywhere across the lifespan, so from birth to hospice. We were talking about hospice today till we leave this earth. From, from, from that age group, from one patient up to 15, about 15 patients daily, and that's 1,520 patients. So if you think about ripple effect, that's a huge ripple effect that we'll have, not only in our region, but as my students leave and go to St. Petersburg, Florida, we're providing that across the nation. So we're really excited about our, our program, and these students would love to answer any of your questions. So thank you for allowing me to come up and present to you today.
Questions or comments from trustees?
So you have 49 in this graduating class that's going to graduate in May of '26. You mentioned these four are all from Southern Illinois. What is kind of the overall makeup of students from Southern Illinois versus other places?
It's about a 60 to 40, 60% Southern Illinois, and I will be biased. We cut off at 64, so Route 57, we're right there. We have about 20% in Central, and then the rest are in of that 40%. So about 20% in the Chicago region, 20% in the middle, and then the other 60% are South. Amazingly, whenever we tour students, I tell their parents, we're going to keep them in Southern Illinois. So that's my goal, is to keep some of them in Southern Illinois. And we've actually done that. A lot of students will get to Southern Illinois and realize they like the outdoors and like, like the lifestyle in Southern Illinois, so we're able to. We lose a few to other places.
Follow-up question. I'm, I can't remember exactly what year you started. Is this the inaugural class?
No, sir, we started in COVID, so August of 2020, we started our first group. So we've had three graduating traditional classes. Is that correct?
And with that, could you share your NCLEX pass rate?
Yes, we have been, our lowest has been 87, our highest has been 92. We have been above the state and above the national average on all of those. There was that dip with COVID, and then they changed the NCLEX also, that was reflective.
That's fantastic. Good job.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Well, my questions are...
Yeah, same here.
Not on the same level as yours, because medicine isn't my background, but I am really impressed with the ripple effect that you all are causing and just the innovation and the way you spoke to your majors, and I'm, I'm ready to watch you all change the world.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for a great presentation, and vessel luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
We're obviously very proud of this program. It's one of our premier programs at, at SIU Carbondale. The, it's high demand. We'll get as many as 600 applications for 50 seats. It's a premier program and it recruits truly nationally, even though we really are trying to target bringing in Southern Illinois students. One of the reasons that we're here, and the main reason I wanted to speak, is that we're looking to expand. We're in partnership with Jerry and his team, and we're expanding up here to Springfield. There's a nursing shortage here. Dr. Whittington and, and Dr. Erica Blumestock, who's currently the program director, have been working with the School of Medicine and through the approval process to begin a cohort in fall of 2026. We're shooting for spring of 2026, but we're probably a little bit behind on that right now. But by fall of 2026, we expect to have our accelerated program right here on the grounds in Springfield with a cohort of 20. So we're very excited about that. We're reaching out, taking our program to where students are and where the need arises. So be happy to entertain any questions about that future.
Can you explain for the board what an accelerated program means? What do they have to get in and what's different than the traditional program?
Yes, and I'm going to speak for about 10 seconds and then give it to Dr. Whittington. But these are students that already have a bachelor's degree, and that will come in and accelerate through the nursing program to get their BSN. Kelly?
He's correct. It's a minimum of 80 college credits that they have to have, and then they'll go right to a year-long, it's a very intense year-long program. The curriculum that we've written for the Springfield cohort is a 15-month program, so it's a little bit longer based on student need. It's designed to be the didactic component online, the clinicals in the hospital setting, so that it allows those individuals to work at the same time, because we know it's a, it's a financial burden for people to quit their employment while they're going to school. What does the expansion look like? How many students are you interested in adding?
We, we are looking for an initial cohort of 20, so every year bringing in a cohort of, of 20 students. And they'll be on the ground here in Springfield. Thanks to Jerry.
These are programs that are in great demand, because they're people that get a bachelor's degree and then decide, I'm interested in healthcare, and they don't want, you know, so it really...
Or they've hit a glass ceiling in another place. A lot of times we see them in another area in a hospital acute care setting, and they've hit a ceiling, and they want to advance their career, and this is a great opportunity to do that, because they're bringing some of that knowledge with them.
So then are you working with the local provider community here to...
That's the goal, yes.
Clinical faculty and to your clinicals and the hospitals here?
Yes.
And then you get the benefit of the multidisciplinary with the medical school and the students, it'll be a wonderful clinical environment.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's the plan.
How are the campuses working together with the nursing programs, if at all?
Well, the facilities are the School of Medicine. We will provide the faculty, and then it's, it's a cooperative, cooperative effort.
Is there any Edwardsville connection to any SIUE and SIUC doing anything?
We've had those discussions. Kelly, go ahead.
We work collaboratively with them on some research ideas, and they have an international honor society called Sigma, and we have become a member of that, so it's now in that large chapter. So we have a joint chapter of Sigma.
Great.
Very good communication between the two schools.
Perfect. Anything you can do to...
Absolutely. Just had dinner with them last week at Sigma.
Nice. Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, so trustee Simmons, they're, they're always in communication, and the Edwardsville nursing program knows that we're moving, Carbondale's moving to Springfield, and so they're always looking for collaborative opportunities for their students and the patients, so...
Great. I will say on the way up here, we were talking about graduate programs, and if I have an individual that's interested in a graduate program, since we don't have any at our facility yet, I'm telling them, go to my sister's school, go to SIUE. Let me get you in the door there, let me help you with that.
So Dr. Whittington, you wrote a textbook together, right? Or a module, a teaching module?
Yes.
Yes, maybe you could mention that too.
Yeah, we've, we have done quite a bit of collaborative research opportunities. I just did a textbook, so, yes, we did. We try to keep those doors friendly, and they are.
Good. I just, speaking from a student's perspective at SIUE many years ago, I always felt like I didn't have a law school, even though now you look at it from 40,000 feet, oh, yeah, we have one in Carbondale, I didn't have a medical school. We have one, you know? It just seemed so, you know, 40 years ago, it seemed so separate, and I've been beating my head against a wall trying to...
I think online learning has bridged a lot of that.
Yeah, so good job. Thank you.
Well, from the SIU Carbondale perspective, when I was an undergrad there, we didn't have nursing. Our nursing students went to Edwardsville. So to see this growth is amazing, and to see the growth of the, what's coming with the expansion, I think it's all great.
Thank you.
You know, as a trustee for a long period of time, I'll just piggyback on something trustee Simmons stated. When we hired President Mahoney, it was one of the concerns, there was no collaboration between the two programs. And to see how this collaboration has grown to the point it is today, I commend both of you for getting it done on behalf of the board, so...
They did the work.
Yeah. It took some leadership on your part as well, so we compliment you. Thank you so much, and we look forward to following your progress at the Springfield. Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on, we now have a presentation by the Office of Community Engagement. President Mahoney, will you please introduce our speaker?
Yes, so as you all know, we started the Office of Community Engagement in 2021. This was something approved by the board. Connie Frost Furlock's been involved since the beginning, and now is officially moving out of the interim director into the director role. And she has a lot of things to talk about that they're working on, both, I think it's increasing staffing, as well as some of the projects that are happening, and some of the goals longer term for the Office of Community Engagement. Already, we're seeing a nice impact on the community, as well as our faculty and students who benefit from these collaborative relationships. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Frost Furlock.
All right, thank you so much. And here we are. Okay. So as President Mahoney said, I'm Connie Frost Furlock. I am fortunate to direct the SIU System Office of Community Engagement, and I'm joined today by Cindy Scarsdale, who is the new administrative agent for the Office of Community Engagement as of July 1st. I'm also very pleased to announce that we have, in addition to hiring Cindy, hired two program coordinators. Leslie Brock just joined June 16th, and Brian Bray joined our team in March, and we have been rocking and rolling ever since. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to share some of the highlights of the work that we've been engaged in over the past year. I've organized a presentation by a 2025-2026 roadmap that we've created for the office to guide our work henceforth. So the first step on the roadmap is strategic integration. Our mission in the office is to strengthen and expand mutually beneficial community/university relationships across Southern Illinois. And we use transdisciplinary collaboration and community-centered frameworks like the Epic Model to ensure our work is grounded in local priorities. The Epic Model centers information and knowledge from the, the community, and we use that then to guide the projects that we engage in. And under this aspect of the roadmap, we see community engagement as a strategy, not a service, that helps drive quality of life improvements in our region. The next stop on the roadmap is, pertains to the scholarly value of engagement. So one key roadmap action step is helping students, staff, and faculty build capacity for community-engaged scholarship. We're creating infrastructure currently and support systems that make this work possible across disciplines and across the system. We're sowing those seeds now, building relationships, developing capacity, and laying the groundwork to bring this vision to full fruition, hopefully within the next year. Moving on, we also highlight and center student experiences, in particular, three of our graduate assistants you see here. They are certainly central to our efforts. Confidence ICKP you see on the left has worked on federal environmental justice projects in both East St. Louis and Copia Heights. She's an environmental science graduate student, set to graduate in a couple of weeks, in fact. Tameja Graham is another graduate student. He has largely worked on the digital equity project that we have funded through the Illinois Broadband Lab, I'll mention a minute, here in a minute later. But he's supported the digital literacy efforts that we have as part of that initiative. And then Constance Easy has led data analysis projects for Godfrey, Alton, East St. Louis, and most recently, the City of Mounds. She has been mining Lightcast data that I'll mention here in a moment. But all of these students are gaining professional experience while helping advance the community-identified goals that we are working on. This is a sample of some of the work that they created. This is out of Constance's work in particular. We used some of the funds from our state appropriation to purchase 10 Lightcast subscriptions. Lightcast is a workforce development dataset, and we have distributed those, I think all of them as of this date, across the SIU system to folks who can benefit from those. Constance is one of those, it has access to the license, and in this case, put together a report on the current supply, the coming demand of clean energy and energy efficiency careers in the East St. Louis area in particular, as part of a project that we are engaged in with the Advanced Energy Group Stakeholder Challenge there. As you can see, one of the many findings that she discovered is that solar PV installers alone have a 38.3% expected growth in the next 10 years. And so we are now looking at where the training opportunities for solar installers and recruiting folks to participate in that training, as well as convening a roundtable later this month with employers who will commit to hiring a certain number of folks who go through that training. So by the end of the year, we hope to have at least 50 folks employed in clean energy and energy efficiency careers based in and around the East St. Louis community. So Constance's report has driven a lot of that work and given us evidence that pursuing this as a career path for residents is a good idea, and will have significant outcomes. Another step on the roadmap involves our community connections. On the left, you see the applied research consultants based in Carbondale. We are working with them currently to do both a survey and a series of focus groups afterwards to find out where folks from across the SIU system are collaborating currently, and we're also looking at what their motivations are to do so, and also what barriers are, what the barriers are in existence that keep them from collaborating both across the system as well as with community partners. And so, of course, we'll take that information back and use it to build capacity to support those, eradicate some of those barriers, and et cetera. On the right, you see a snapshot of the footprint we currently occupy in our community connections. We have approximately a 4,700 square foot, square mile footprint that we're working out of, as far north as Springfield, specifically with the Springfield project located there, and as far south as the City of Mounds. So we have quite an extensive footprint, and with the addition of Leslie Brock to the team, who has a deeper knowledge and connection in the Southern Illinois part of the state, we only expect to continue growing that further south. Along the way again on the roadmap, we are emphasizing cultivating and supporting campus and community leaders. And so you see here in particular, a photo of a panel that we were able to put together for part of the Sustainability Research and Innovation Congress recently held in Chicago, Illinois. We were able to support our community colleague JD Dixon, who is founder of the Clean City Coalition based in East St. Louis, and our partner, Dr. Tandra Taylor, who was interim director for the Institute for Community Justice and Racial, I always mix that up, racial equality? Am I close enough? But we, we supported Tandra as part of this conversation, and the three of us talked about what the relationship looks like between the SIU system and the city of East St. Louis, both from the academic side, but of course, with JD in the middle there, grabbing that community perspective and highlighting what's working and where we need to improve our relationship for the benefit of us all. Visibility and value is something that we're working on as well, telling our story, because this is just a snapshot, this is just a highlight, we have a lot more going on. And so part of our efforts in the coming year, and in fact, launching later this month, will be an OCE newsletter, likely partnered with the Institute for Rural Health. We're planning to launch this as a quarterly publication, and you can see some snapshots, a little bit of a preview as to what that will look like. So we'll, we'll open it up, of course, with an introduction to the office. And so part of our efforts in the coming year, and in fact, launching later this month, will be an OCE newsletter likely partnered with the Institute for Rural Health. We're planning to launch this as a quarterly publication. And you can see some snapshots, a little bit of a preview as to what that will look like. So we'll open it up, of course, with an introduction to the offices. We're certainly going to continue to highlight students' light confidence. And then in the back, you see that we're also promoting some activities that we are hosting at the WEDGE, the WEDGE Innovation Center in Alton, Illinois. Accounting assessment is important to any office's work to make sure that we are making the impact that we are setting out to make. So to plan and evaluate our work, we have adopted a strategic doing methodology. Strategic doing is a framework built for action. It's not about strategic planning, although there's a component of planning. But it's make a plan, do an action. Reiterate the process, make a plan, do another action. Lots of more to it, but the the moral of the story, the nutshell here is that this process helps us focus on measurable outcomes, quick wins, and iterative learning through what we call a 30-30 cycle. So every 30 days, we meet to review the plan that we had put together. We share what we learned as a result of enacting that plan. And then we set the plan for the next 30 days to accomplish the next goal. So far, OCE has developed through this process a guide for community members to understand what grants are recurring on a regular cycle, to help our community members get positioned far in advance of the upcoming deadline to be eligible and have a strong application prepared for that. Constance, the student you saw with the Clean Energy Report, has been doing, as I said, several community reports. We will soon be adding those to the website. And then also, we use the the method to develop a robust onboarding plan for our new team members so that they get acquainted with the the work that we do, as well as the communities, including on-campus and off, that we serve and work with. And then the Institute for Rural Health has also adopted this process. That's what the photo shows there. And we're really using it right now to do some of what we heard in the previous conversation. That is to develop interprofessional community engagement experiences for health sciences students, starting with the Doctor of Nursing Practitioner Program and then thinking about where other health sciences students can contribute. Just again, like we heard, where the dental students or, you know, the nursing students are teaching the dental students how to do injections and other procedures. We definitely appreciate the state appropriation that we receive annually, but we also pursue external funding when it makes sense. And so we have an active, rather active portfolio of grant proposals, as you can see on this infographic. We are currently working on three externally funded initiatives, including the Proud Project, as well as a broadband-ready initiative that I mentioned earlier. We've been receiving funds from that program for about three years now. It is part of the Digital Equity Act. So our our situation in that project is a little tentative, but we are finding ways to continue because the community has come to see us as a resource in digital equity. And so we're going to continue offering that. We're also working on a collaborative project around grant training, you see on the bottom corner there, with the Midwest Climate Collaborative. We're hosting several types of grant development and grant management training workshops for a 13-state Midwestern footprint that the Midwest Climate Collaborative serves. We have submitted seven grant proposals in the past year. I believe three of those may have been canceled because of federal changes, but nonetheless, we have at least four still under review. Those applications went to six different federal and state agencies. We have many collaborators on those applications. We do not submit an application for a grant, a funding opportunity, without a handful at least of collaborators on those applications. And some total, we have requested somewhere around $27-plus million. Again, we're not going to receive all that, at least four. And these were the the larger grant submissions have been canceled. But nonetheless, we will continue pursuing external funding that aligns with our community goals and our office's mission. A little bit more to shed light on those projects that we do currently have funding for. You can see on the right, some of the faculty and staff who have been engaged in the Proud Collaboration across the system and the kinds of contributions they are adding to the project. Right now, we're working on training for Bureau of Prisons staff members. And so these are the sorts of topics that that population has indicated is interesting to them, is of importance to them. So hopefully, we'll be rolling that training out later this summer. We are also pivoting to make it a little bit more of a broader scope so that it will be useful and helpful to folks in addition outside of the Bureau of Prisons staff group. And then on the left again is a little bit about, a little highlight, a little preview of what we're doing with our broadband-ready funding. Coming up next week on July 16th, we'll be back at the WEDGE in Alton. And through a collaboration with the SIUE Iris Digital Humanities Center, we're going to be doing an exercise called Putting Ourselves on the Map. Dr. Meg Smith will lead this discussion, where community members will be able to learn how to add their, what do we call it, sites of cultural significance and sites of memory that they know about into a spreadsheet, then which will populate a story map. And so they'll gain some digital skills and understanding of how that technology works. But they'll also start to learn about bias and how bias gets integrated into the data. What our plan is for this this site to live on, so that in future gatherings at the WEDGE, new community members can add additional content. We can see that that map grow and develop as as we get more input. And then when we introduced this idea, by the way, we had a couple of small business owners in the room. And their eyes lit up immediately because, for example, the hotel manager was excited about his desk clerks getting access to something like this. So when they have travelers come in, the desk clerks can say, oh, here's a place. If you're interested in Germanian coffee, for example, right, this is a great place to go. And and point them to places that may not show up on tourism documents or Google searches. So highlighting those locally owned businesses and, in this case, the the significance of those places in the Metro East. And then finally, networking is certainly an important part of the work that we do. Networking within the system as well as with other entities external to us. And so you see some of the the networking connections that we've made. I mentioned the Midwest Climate Collaborative. We have that OSAIC Momentum funding for them. We're in year two of a year three project currently. We have done several presentations and developed several kind of relationships as a result of that. You heard me talk about the Sustainability Research and Innovation Congress. And the International Congress, that this was the first time it had been in the United States. So it was a pretty nice experience to bring our community member and our, with Dr. Tandra Taylor along. TechSDL is a partner with us when it comes to the broadband-ready work. We've been leveraging several of the certificate programs through Grow with Google and Coursera to make those available with no cost to our community members. We have a couple of residents at the Alton Housing Authority, in fact, who are taking advantage of that certificate program. I mentioned the Epic Network, and then finally, the Leadership Council, helping us connect to business entities and other leaders in the community in the Metro East in particular. And with that, I will answer any questions, share any information. Cindy passed down a folder that has the roadmap included in it, as well as the report, if you'd like to see any additional information related there. But I'm happy to share anything else, answer any questions.
Comments, questions from trustees? Dr. Spurlock, this community engagement from its inception was built around what? What was our main focus when we started?
Serving underserved communities.
Okay, and the allocation that we got from legislators at that time was how much?
$2.25.
And this pass appropriation?
$2.66. I don't want to miss those dollars.
That was close enough.
Yeah.
And this last appropriation was what?
The same, $2.66.
Okay, and did that enable us to add additional staffing?
Absolutely it did.
And I'm asking these questions because, again, when we started this process, the goal focus was to go into the low-income communities, ask the fundamental questions, okay? How can we help you? One, two, what are your needs? Three, how can we help you to access right grants and get that money into your community? And then four, how are we going to help you to address the reporting of those funds? Now, I did hear too much about that. And I want to just keep that as a major focus because, again, I think Dr. Mahoney and you and others know where my true feelings were about this community engagement. As we worked with East St. Louis, as we worked with Cogia Heights. And certainly, I want to just compliment you. You were just great. You've been great in helping Venice, Brooklyn, Madison, even Alton, when we needed to get the get security there and get the, the what helped me?
Body cams?
Yes, the body cams and all. And now we got some other communities that are asking for the same thing. I just don't want us to lose focus of that. And those are the kinds of questions I certainly will be in. I think President Mahoney and you would agree that I've been one of, and will continue to be, one of the biggest advocates with our legislators to get funding for this community engagement. But I don't want us to lose focus of what our primary purpose were when we started this. Like, I'm excited that you mentioned Mounds. You know, that was one of the governors. And I called you and said, hey, Governor Pritzker, Deputy Governor Menard, and others, they want us to do something down in Mounds. Okay, we got Chairman Gilbert on the phone, and we're moving in that direction to help. But I'm gonna, this is something that is very, very dear to me and others that are fighting for these low-income communities. And I also want to just give a shout out to particularly Chancellor Lane, how you have worked directly with these low-income communities to help identify and push potential candidates to them for, to meet their needs. For example, I'll give you two. Cogia Heights was in desperate need of a, of an engineer to help with all of the flooding issues that they're having down there. We called both campuses here, both SIUE, SIU Carbondale. Chancellor Lane took it up on himself, drove the process of identifying those students, vetting those students, and helped Cogia Heights to hire us an engineer who is making about $85,000 a year right now. And he's African-American, okay? And that was what that community needed. It was all through this community engagement. So I just want to just keep that in focus. If we look at Venice, Venice, and Dr. Spurlock, you've done an amazing job from the start with Venice, from the time that we started this revitalization. As a result of Dr. Spurlock and a few of her colleagues, we have now, we have a new school, $26 million. And the biggest, the biggest item that we needed to have done was, you went into the community, you did the survey, you gathered the information, and we were able to use that information. We got the $3.4 million for infrastructure. We got another $1.9 for additional infrastructure, dealing with drainage issues. We now have $2.4 to have jumpstart a grocery store. We were applying for the $20-some million for Cogia Heights here just recently. And so I just want to keep those things out there and let the board know that this is not, you know, this looks good, but there are some critical needs that we have in our low-income communities that I am going to be really raising those questions. Where are we with that funding? How are we doing? Give me some data to show that we are raising the level and improving the conditions for our low-income African-American communities. And so I'm being very strong in my comments here because when I came back on the board, that was one of the things I said to the governor that we have to do. We have to do this. He said, okay, how much do we need? How are we going to get it done? They raised the money, and again, even this year until the budget was cut. Or I won't say cut, they held it stagnant. We were going to get additional money for, to grow this community engagement. So those are just some fill-in points that I want to just keep up there as someone who is very much interested in these low-income communities.
Thank you for that. This is definitely a snapshot. We have a lot going on that we just don't have time today to share. I was in the City of Mounds on Monday, in fact, and had a wonderful conversation with the mayor there. And these communities are so eager to have us engaged. These are oftentimes places we haven't been before. And so to see someone like Mayor Woods light up and know that he has a university system on his side to help him improve the quality of life for his residents means so much to him and really fuels my energy to do more.
Exactly. So thank you so much. Comments, questions? Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah.
I have a question. So I spoke to someone earlier today who is the Director of Chicago Housing Authority.
Yes.
Mr. Ken Malone, do you know that?
I don't know that name.
Make the introduction if you'd like. And so he's a little concerned about federal cuts coming down at the rate of about 38 or 39%, I think he said. Do you, do you have concerns?
I have lots of concerns, absolutely. The three or four applications that we had under review that were killed because of federal changes really had significant impacts or had potential for significant impacts. One of them was an $11.8 million application that would have increased the capacity of the Cogia-Namioki-Cascasia pump station, which is a major problem when it comes to flooding in the American bottoms community. And so that entire program, that was part of the BRIC program, it was, it was canceled. And as a result of that, in fact, a week after it was canceled, I saw there was more flooding in Granite City and immediately thought, we have a plan, but we need the funding.
No, we have the plan, but the mayors, Dr. Spurlock had just done an incredible job of pulling the mayors together, getting our legislators on board. We met with the legislators, and of course, they pulled the funding. And we lost it just out of the blue. They sent me an email, sent Dr. Spurlock an email, said that, hey, funding is discontinued. So again, it's an issue that we're fighting. But again, as you just stated, I want to just reiterate, our focus with this community engagement, do not forget our low-income African-American communities. We're working with the rural areas, but those, that was the focus of getting this done. And we'll keep that front and center as we move forward.
Mentioned rural areas. Cindy and I were in Bunker Hill last night facilitating a conversation. They want to do economic development for a lot of communities, right?
Yes, 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 yes. Well, thank you so much, and again, we applaud you for the outstanding leadership that you're providing. Next, we will close the meeting to go into executive session. I'm going to close the meeting to the public for the purpose of considering appointment, enrollment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiation, matters between the university and its employees of their representative or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more class of employees. Pending probable imminent court proceedings against or on behalf of the board and review of executive session minutes. The relevant sections of the Open Meetings Act statute that allows for the closed session are by ILCS 120-2C, 1, 2, 11, and 21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Not a secretary. Not a secretary.